Good morning. Call abating to order. We'll start with the invocation, Supervisor Bishop, and the Pledge of Allegiance, Supervisor Angus. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals and we pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Please draw me in, pledge. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors, made by a motion, recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-43103, portions A3 and 4. Call for a motion to call for an executive session to be held October 2, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion consultation with legal counsel in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes 38, 34103, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Mr. Rasmussen, discussion of pending legal contemplated litigation of claims.
Nothing to report.
Committee and/or legislative reports. I'll start to my left, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an update, Lake Havasu MPO Executive Board met and passed a resolution on the I-15. We also made it clear that we did not want anything to do with toll roads. As you know, the SRS pilt fly-ins have been taking place. Been working with Mr. Widener. I had him send me a report. He met with over 70 offices in the past two weeks. And some of the key players he met with were House Majority Leader Kevin McCarty. Met with him on Thursday in person. He listened to the presentation about the fiscal Bryson Rec implications on pilt of Congress and failing to extend SRS. He had no idea and thanked us for the heads up and pledged to talk to Speaker Ryan, Senate Finance Chair Hatch, House Ways and Means Committee Chair Brady of Natural Resources, Chairman Bishop. Utah was also at the meeting. They introduced Chairman Bishop's new committee staffers to Senate Democratic ranking member Cantwell so they could negotiate an active national forest management bill. As a result, we are now in negotiations taking place for the first time between the House Republicans and the Senate Democrats on a long-term resolution of forest fires. This is a big step forward for both sides. He met with Paul Cook, a California rep, for an hour in gaining his commitment to offer secure rural school funding to the House Active National Forest Management Bill. And then met with Jeff Small, GOSSAR's Western Caucus Director. He invited three county officials to speak last Friday on impacts of failing to fund SRS and pilt for the pilt counties at the monthly Western Caucus meeting, which was attended by 85 House and Senate staffers.
I believe that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Bishop?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
Last week, the Mojave Water Authority met in Bullhead City. I brought Lois Wakamoto, our newest supervisor, and hopefully she'll be taking my place if I become the legislative liaison for CSA. There are just some items that we would probably be speaking about in the near future. There's some concern about some water transfers. And when the time comes, we'll talk more about that. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Wakamoto?
Thank you. I had an interesting beginning to my position. We were able to achieve getting the mosquito pilot program initiated in the valley, working with the tribe as well as the farmers. Kudos to Patty Mead, Bill Flynn, and her staff. Kudos to Steve Moss, who laid the groundwork that made me look good. And then we had a small flood in, it wasn't a small flood, it was actually a big flood in Golden Shores due to the roundabout. Kudos to Steve Lutowski, who was able to give me a work-related worksheet for the county that begins today for those people to cure that problem and move forward to making life better for them again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
That's it.
You were pretty busy.
Tried to be.
Very good. First two weeks on the job. Just jumped right in and got with it. I have a short report this morning. Last week, I was in Washington, D.C., talking to legislators or congressional folks and to the Department of Interior, Department of Indian Affairs concerning the Diamond Creek Pipeline. That's the Wallopai Indian Project to bring water from the Colorado River to Peach Springs and then on to Grand Canyon West. A number of people were in attendance to those meetings. Tom Buskowski, the Director of the Arizona Department of Water Resources. Representative from SRP was Patrick Siegel. Representative from the Central Arizona Project was David Johnson. Then we had folks from Preport McMoran and also a report from Dr. Joseph Kalt, who's a professor of economics at Harvard. So we feel our meetings were successful. What I was stressing at the absolute most was to make sure that Wallopai Tribe could use their 4,000 acres from the Colorado River and not develop a water field in the Truxton Aquifer. So everyone in our group agreed that it's a priority to pull the water from the Colorado River and that the water that's in the Diamond Creek Aquifer is a finite resource. And I believe the Department of Interior understands that now. So after that, I think we felt pretty confident that people had a clear understanding. And we'd like to thank Senator Flake, Senator McCain, and our Representative Goosar for their cooperation in putting those bills forward. And that's my report. County Administrator's Report.
No report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the August 7, 2017, regular minute meetings?
Make a motion to approve the August 7, 2017, regular minute meetings.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we'll go on down to Call of the Republic. Those wishing to address the Board at the Call of the Public regarding matters not on the agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call of the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing the matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to the items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. I have a number of people that would like to speak this morning. Leanne Hoglund Smith?
Leanne Hoglund Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road. And good morning. In the past, you've been looking at some solutions to close the budget shortfall gap. And one of the proposals was closing the real libraries. And before you do that, I encourage two things. Look at the policy the library district has already established as the criteria for the establishment of a library. My understanding, the Mojave County Library exceeded the recommended criteria, as well as Supervisor Bishop talked about wisdom. Wisdom is learning from the mistakes of others. And as you start looking about watching your pennies, your dollars will grow. Maybe look at your fleet. Expeditions, explorers, necessary four-by-four, take less, are more, less fuel efficient than the Escape four-by-four that two of the county supervisors drive. As you look to turn in these vehicles, maybe it's better to standardize your fleet. That way, it's easier on your mechanics and it becomes both most efficient and more effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, the vehicle fleet has nothing to do with the library tax?
May I respond?
Certainly. Just a statement.
Okay.
Royanne Ortiz?
My name is Royanne Ortiz. I live at 1550 Mana Vista Drive in beautiful Bullhead City, Arizona. First thing I want to do is thank Nathan McDaniel. I was here at the last meeting and I couldn't figure out where to find the video for a meeting that I wanted to watch. And he came down right after I complained and took me up there and showed me exactly what he had done, the changes he had made, and how I could get to it. So kudos to Nathan. Then I'd also like to thank Mike Hendricks. He graciously gave me an appointment and I was able to talk to him for about an hour. Not that we agreed on everything, but we did get things discussed. I have written up a three-page memo on an issue that I'm passionate about because I have such extensive experience in the procurement area. In fact, recently, in fact, on the way here, Becky O'Brien called me, so I wanted to thank her for returning my call from last Friday. And I would like to get an appointment with her to discuss the contract, which was for Pest Control Services. I have issues with that and I've given you written comments. I also provided an analysis of the reasons why I think the price should not have been determined fair and reasonable on that procurement. Fortunately, you stopped it for only one year, so you only overspent by $10,000, but it could have been up to $50,000. And I have concerns about that because I think the employees who spend government funds have a duty to spend them as if it was their own money. Because the reason there was a change in that procurement was for the convenience of a employee in the facilities maintenance department. I was just wondering if that employee would mind coming out with the $10,000 for all that convenience. So the prices we pay for our goods and services must be fair and reasonable based on the requirements and the solicitation methods selected. It should have generated competition. It didn't. And the oral justification for paying 100% over-market price was that it added value to the county. I'm not accusing anyone of wrongdoing or any criminal activity or anything like that. I'm just saying, maybe we need to take a look at what's going on in the procurement departments. My understanding that there's really no review of any of the actions taken in that department. That's what Becky told me. So that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Eva Corbett?
Good morning, everyone, and especially Lois. I'm very happy to see you today. And of course, our district person, Hildy Angus. We love her. Anyway, the reason I'm here is I want to represent Bullhead City today. I'm sorry. 2426 Topanga Drive, Bullhead City. And I was at the fair and I got this from our city, so I'm really excited about it. Anyway, I'm here for the Sheriff's K-9 Unit. As you know, I've been with them, a volunteer, for five years. And we're having our annual Halloween pet contest at, pet costume contest at Tractor Supply on the 21st of October. And I'd like to invite you to come and be judges. Hildy's been a judge with me for a couple of years now, so I'd like to invite you as well. I know you all love animals, right? And this is a very worthy cause. All of our money goes to the Mojave County Sheriff's K-9 Foundation. Thank you so much.
Michael Boone?
My name is Michael Boone, 2210 Palo Verde North, Lake Havasu City. I'm kind of new to Mojave County and Lake Havasu, but in my short experience been here and the nature of my business, I get a lot of phone calls asking why things occur. And I have a past history of working in municipalities, so I get it. But the thing that concerns me is that people that are elected to a public office should be serving the public, not be self-serving. And they should be watching how they spend the taxpayers' money, not thinking that it's an open checkbook to buy whatever you want, whatever you want, reimburse whoever you want for whatever reason, and go outside of your policies. I'm hoping the Board will listen to what I'm saying because I'm not the first person that's probably said that, only I'm not saying it loud and screaming on a soapbox. So please look at what you do. Remember, you work for the public. You don't work for yourself. And when you have agenda items that affect your personal business or other board members' personal business, show the courtesy or recuse yourself from that vote. And don't give the perception that this is Hazard County, Georgia. Thank you very much.
Mr. Boone, if you ever see a Mojave County employee that is not doing their job or an elected official, and you feel that they are breaking the law in some way, please contact our county attorney at your first opportunity.
I did you one better this morning. I left a request for public records and I copied the AG and I also copied Judicial Watch.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Stephen Robinson, 3439 North Bowie Road, Golden Valley. Good morning, Chairman Watson, Board members. Item 18 on the agenda, consent agenda, is about setting a public hearing for the Golden Valley Improvement District for 60 days from now. In ARS 48-910 subsection B, it says that a hearing should be set not less than 10 days from the notice and that the notice should be placed in three places within the district. I'm concerned about setting it up for the week of Thanksgiving. It's like, well, nobody will be there, so we'll have it then, when it could easily be held the first meeting in November or either meeting in October. So when you discuss this item, and part of what I was hoping would happen when I saw this in the budget, that you would have meetings out in Golden Valley to discuss it with the residents instead of at one meeting here in front of the Board of Supervisors at 9:30 in the morning, when a lot of people who work, you know, days cannot make it here. So when you look at the agenda, please, I ask the question, under what statutory authority are you setting it that far out? And perhaps, when you get to that agenda item, you know, you can set it out six months in advance, but why set it so far out and at the worst opportune time for the Board? Another example of where that was done was the original hearing that is next month for building and zone, building permit fees. The original plan was to have that meeting in June because it said so in the original ordinance 2017-2, that it was going to be publicly, or the setting of that date was June 5th with June 19th. Instead, it ended up being on the worst possible day, the day of the budget hearing. I hope that that's just honest mistakes and not deliberate because it's unfortunate if the people are having to go to four-hour or eight-hour meetings. So I encourage you to please set this meeting for the Golden Valley Improvement District at least no sooner than the 6th of November instead of Thanksgiving week. Thank you.
That concludes our consent agenda. I'm sorry, our Call of the Public. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group, acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items. Unless a Board member so requests, in that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to remove?
Six and 13, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop?
Seven and 18.
None for me.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
None.
Okay. And I have 11, 14, 15, and 18. So that would be, the motion would be to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items 6, 7, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 18.
So made.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, there being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Autumn to item number six.
Most for discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I just pulled it off. We had a problem with the original CDBG grant we were putting through. We've gotten an extension. I believe this is going to drag it out. I just think that the project that we had in mind to help the veterans on housing, or veterans and low-income people on housing is the best way to go. That's why I pulled it off, instead of dragging it out.
I don't understand that at all.
Supervisor Angus?
I don't understand what Supervisor Johnson just said.
I believe this isn't for CDBG grant funding?
Mr. Chairman, could I have Director Walsh come down and address that? I think we're talking two different things. Same program, though.
Right.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, the proposal before you is for an upcoming CDBG cycle. Basically, what we're looking at is this item would just direct staff to begin to prepare a proposal for consideration, for the Board's consideration in the 2018 CDBG cycle. So it wouldn't affect the existing grant funding that's in place.
All right. Then I have no problems with it if you're not going after the one we have now.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item seven.
Chairman Watson, I pulled this item just so I could recruise myself. And what this is, is I was on the Board representing the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to take myself off as a county supervisor and be appointed as the representative for the Fraternal Order of Police. And Supervisor Wakamoto has graciously accepted, if the Board so desires, to take that position that I'm walking away from.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll still approve. Motion? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Disregard my aye.
I believe you recused yourself. It's to approve and authorize the Board Chairman to sign all required documents related to the contract for Mojave County Arnold Plaza asbestos and lead-based paint abatement, accepting the Brownfields State Response Grant funding of up to $120,867 for the purpose of removing those liabilities from that location. I have Pat Farrell that would like to speak to that item.
Good morning, Supervisors. Appreciate the opportunity to talk before you today and welcome our newest supervisor. Being a Navy man, we had a term that said, "Don't volunteer for anything," so you might want to consider that. The Arnold Plaza Project, I need to clarify a little bit about what's going on with that. There's the opinion that it's a flop house, and it is not. It is a complete program to help those veterans that are at risk, homeless, or suicidal, seeking a hand up, become, welcome back into civilized civilization with good opportunities and good opportunities for their families to keep them off the government dole. This program benefits everybody in Mojave County, all cities, all communities, as we will take anyone that demonstrates the need and the hand up to do that. And we have worked on this project for a year. And in addition to the $120,000 listed, we received over $42,000 in grants for the Phase One portion of it, just to determine the needs of this facility. And this facility is ideally located for what we want to do. I want to thank Mike Hendricks for working with us on this and Supervisor Jean Bishop and all of you for what you've done for us so far. We have made this project the number-one priority for ADEQ in the state. And how many times is Mojave County number one in the state unless you turn the list over? So we appreciate consideration and approval of this particular consent agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Chairman Watson? May I say something?
Yes.
I want to thank Ms. Farrell for your hard work on this project. Just to remind everybody, this was a building that was abandoned in Kingman from the county, and it was scheduled to be demolished at a cost of, what was it, about $800,000? Five to $800,000?
$500.
$500? Yeah. And when we came in, the Board, we said, "Well, you know, why don't we see if there's, we could repurpose it," to use a word that they like using now. And we waited and waited and then Pat Farrell and his group came in, and I can't think of a better use for it. And we're just so thrilled that it's moving, I'm thrilled that it's moving along. And maybe in conjunction with the West Care, one that we're trying to get done in Mojave Valley, we will be helping our veterans. So we just wanted to thank you so much.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of item number 11. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion and a second for approval of item number 11. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question of staff on this. We have the limited courts.
Did you wish to speak to?
Somebody will have to answer the questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have Coral Lloyd, and it looks like the courts are here, so that...
Mr. Anderson and Ms. Lloyd?
The question is, we have, you're asking for more funds to cover a contract. It's in a limited court in Lake Havasu. We have a contract in place down there, and we're saying that it's been renegotiated during the year. Is that correct?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, you know, I'm not directly involved with it, but what I understand is throughout the year, the city, we have a contract with the city of Lake Havasu, and then throughout the year, they evaluate how things are spent, and then how, and they compare that against the filings between the municipal court and the justice court. And I know we've debated them with the city manager, and I believe Coral Lloyd has done, not debated, but gone back and forth to make sure we're, you know, this is accurate. So then they bill back at what they feel is the appropriate amounts based on the filing numbers. And I think that's why there's sometimes a difference during the year, and why there's sometimes an additional bill.
I guess where I'm confused, this is an IGA between Mojave County and the city of Lake Havasu, and I see nothing that's come before the board, for the board to make a decision on this IGA to renegotiate it.
I don't know what the status of the IGA is. We're looking at the, our office looks at the actual, so they provide the actuals, and we make that adjustment based upon their actual costs and the court costs. But we can certainly go back and look into the IGA and bring that forward.
Okay, because I'm not arguing over the money, but I'm just saying that if it's an IGA, the only people that can negotiate that IGA are the board and the city, not the courts.
And Mr. Chairman, if...
Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's more of a reconciliation. There's no change in the existing agreement. I believe the numbers are based on court cases, or, and during the year, that number gets modified, I believe, halfway through the year, and then those monies are requested from the city. There is a question that we have, from an administrative standpoint, is whether we should stick to the, whether we should stick to the exact numbers that are given to us and just pay that amount during the year, or whether we should address a reconciliation. And the language for that probably needs to be clarified in the MOU and brought before the board, so I'll take a look at that.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Would you recommend, then, to bring this back in a couple of weeks after we get that clarified, or?
Well, I think we need to reconcile it today, but I think the board needs to come back before the board, because any IGA is interchanged, should be, you know, a board notification. So I'd make a motion to approve at this time with...
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 14. For the approval, the purchase of a new midsize SUV to replace unit 6828 Jeep Patriot due to ongoing mechanical deficiencies and disablement. I have one person signed up that would like to speak to it, Mr. Michael Boone.
Should have moved forward, since I'm going to be up here so much. Michael Boone, 2210 Palo Verde North, Lake Havasu City. I'm concerned, is this a law enforcement vehicle, or is it a vehicle used by the county? That's the only thing it doesn't say there. And I'm concerned, have you made any attempt to talk to rental car companies that are selling their vehicles? Is the board aware, because that's one of the things I did for my municipality, that there are city co-op plans where you can go to other different cities and purchase cars through their buying power? We bought our police cars through the highway patrol, so we got a significant $20,000 discount on our cars, because we were buying them in group. So is any effort as a purveyor of the money of the taxpayer to gone outside, other than just run down to the local dealership and buy a car? And why a Jeep Patriot? I mean, we're looking at cars that are high-end cars, unless this is for a county executive, and how much the car is going to be used. You can get good rental cars from Avis. Talk to your partner in Henderson, Nevada. They lease their cars. There's a company out there that leases city vehicles. They refurbish city vehicles to make them new, new motors, new transmissions, new interiors, for counties and cities that are strapped budget. And again, back to my original comment, I think you have an obligation to go more than just run down to a local Dodge, Ford, or Chevy dealer and buy a car, especially when there's so many opportunities out there through city co-op purchasing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Mr. Chairman? I believe this is a health department vehicle, if I'm not, am I correct on that, Ms. Lutowski? You'd nod your head if I'm...
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, while Director Lutowski is coming down, I wanted to make it clear, one of the things that I would recommend is, before any changes are made, you understand how we do business. And we do extensively use cooperative purchase agreements in purchasing. I'm not familiar with whether we're utilizing this, but purchasing always looks for the best price. If the cooperative agreements that are made either through a jurisdiction or through the state of Arizona are better than, you know, the bid price, that's what we end up utilizing. So we are actively trying to save the county and the taxpayers' money.
This is a health department vehicle?
Good morning, Chairman Watson. Members of the board. Supervisor Johnson, correct, this is a vehicle assigned to the public health department.
Okay, I just wanted to correct that part for the gentleman, and then, and just to further expand on that, his ideas of leasing, and those ideas are things that we've looked at in the past, and we couldn't, might not be able to look at in the future again, but we have like an internal lease program, or where everybody, we have our own pool of money, which the board set up to begin with, and all vehicles are paid for monthly on a lease-purchase sort of plan. And so that we just keep the vehicles long enough under warranty, so we're able to reduce our maintenance pool in the public works. And so everything is taken care of by the dealerships. And then when we reach the maximum of care that the local, or the jurisdictions will do, the Ford dealer, or Chevy dealer, or those guys, we put them off for sale, and we've actually been getting over blue book on them. So the program we have now, which I think is a program that a lot of government should be using, has worked real well, and we'll be willing to share that with you if you have any further questions on it, sir. That's all I have.
Chairman Watson?
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
I also want to correct the gentleman, we can't by law just go down to the dealership and buy, you know, there's a bidding process, and it's a really well-thought-out plan. Just want to put your mind at ease at that.
Okay, I believe, any further questions for Mr. Lutowski?
No, that's all. He could have nodded.
All right. Do we have a motion currently on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we approve, agenda item number 14, as written.
Motion and a second by Supervisor Angus. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item 15, for the approval of the purchase of a new SUV for a by-four sheriff's office patrol vehicle to replace unit 5225, a 2013 Ford Expedition, due to a crash rendering the vehicle totaled and not repairable. I have one person signed up that would like to speak to that item. Mr. Boone?
Michael Boone, 2210 Palo Verde North, Lake Havasu City. If it's a well-thought-out plan, ma'am, how come some people are driving Expeditions and some people are driving Escapes? On number 15, the vehicle that was involved in the collision, does the county subrogate against the person that hit that vehicle and try to recover those monies back to offset that? Again, there's Homeland Security grants, there's multiple customs grants that are available to law enforcement agencies, in which they can get K-9 vehicles. You have an airport, that's an obvious example of what DHS is looking for, to give vehicles. And they give them fully equipped with the air conditioning system, the auto start, everything. You just have to take the initiative and effort to file for that grant, and have the skill set to be able to file for that grant. I know agencies that have recently got those vehicles. Again, there's a company in Texas that takes all police vehicles, refurbishes, put new motors in them, and especially with a K-9 car. I know for a fact, our K-9 cars were unusable after they were done, because they were full of dog hair. So our resale value on that car was next to nothing, to cleaning them up. So that car is only going to have a specific use. The average deputy is not going to be able to get in that vehicle and use it. It's probably going to be signed to a resident deputy with his dog. So again, I go back to my thing about fiscal responsibility. You need to start looking other places where you can start saving money, rather than trying to get rid of a library, or trying to get rid of, or take money from other people, or other departments, or like I think you call it over here, sweeps. You need to start looking at the people that are buying your stuff. Make sure they have the skill sets to know how to go out and buy the stuff. You can offset the K-9 cage and the K-9 compartment through grant money with that as well. So all I'm trying to tell you is, I see an awful lot of writing checks, and I don't see anybody taking time to make some calls, make four or five calls. Some of the companies that make that equipment, like Satina, they, small agencies that can't afford it, they give those things away. Federal Light Bar gives those light bars away to agencies that are strapped. But you have to make the initiative, you have to make the contact, and you have to ask, rather than say, "Agreed. Thank you."
Mr. Boone? I'll make a motion for the approval of item number 15.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Comment? Okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Move on to item number 18.
Thank you, Chairman Watson. I see Director Lutowski heading for the podium, and that's exactly what I was going to ask for. If you could just explain the process of public hearings, and any hearings that we may have coming up in the Golden Valley vicinity for the residents there. Thank you.
Yes. Good morning again, members of the board, and Supervisor Bishop. This initiative concerns proposed water system revenue options for the Golden Valley Improvement District. I may like to first lay it off by stating that the consideration to change any rates and fees with regard to Golden Valley Improvement District does demand a minimum 60 days advanced notice for the public hearing. So as I provide just a brief minute summary of the initiative, it would be the pleasure of the board to establish a public hearing that would have to occur no earlier than November 20th, and hence, staff represent the motion with a November 20th designation. It would have to occur some board meeting past that. Staff was targeting implementation, if it was the concurrence of the board to effect any changes in fees commenced at the beginning of January. So there is some flexibility there with regard to considering December. But this particular initiative was driven by the fact that there is declining water sale revenues to the district. That is to the tune of $50,000 from fiscal year 14 through fiscal year 17. While our expenses has, by and large, remained relatively steady, our revenues from water sales have continually declined. And we present two initiatives, or two options, if you will, merely to meet the annual expenses as it relates to administering the system, producing water, and also sustaining the system, providing a level of preventive maintenance, as well as a maintenance reserve, if you will, when we do incur substantial costs, such as the recent rehabilitation of well number two, which was well into the six-figure range. I won't get into the fine details of the two options, but to sum up, we have a rate option whereby there would be an establishment of a water rate, and also for our meter customers, a $15 minimum, which would include a 1,500 gallon per month of water allowance under that $15. So establishing a rate that would extend to the meter customers, as well as the stamp pipe customers, that allow us to recover those very expenses I spoke of. But then there is also an alternative, as permitted by statute, to maintain the rates as is. We find that the level of revenue brought in by the existing water rate is sufficient to administer the system and produce water. However, it is not sufficient to sustain the system. And as a result, another revenue option to fund what I call, again, a maintenance reserve, if you will, is to establish a tax levy, only on those parcels that are located within the boundaries of the Golden Valley Improvement District. And staff has estimated that the minimum tax levy would be $1.50 per $100 net assessed limited property value. And there's two other items that staff is proposing for the board, serving as the board directors for the district. The consideration in that would be to increase the future development fee, which is the fee for an acquisition of an unassigned water allocation. The water allocations for Golden Valley Improvement District were assigned back in 1990 to the various parcels, but the district still holds approximately 442 unassigned water allocations that may be of interest to certain district property owners that wish to develop a more intensive development on their parcel. Perhaps it's a lot split in a small subdivision, or perhaps it's a commercial establishment where one allocation, providing for 200 gallons per day, is insufficient. And as a result, we are proposing increasing that to an amount of $5,200 per allocation. And that would enable us to attain an ultimate system expansion that we have programmed at $2.8 million. And this would be to provide the necessary production and storage capability to accommodate all of the allocations that are held by the district. And then lastly, two small policy revisions. One would be to establish a new policy for residential meter customer bill adjustment for water leak claims, as well as a new policy prohibiting customer service lines from supplying district water to other properties. So other properties need tie into a water line operated and owned by the Golden Valley Improvement District, and not another customer's service line, which would be located behind the meter. That sums it up, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, and this will all be explained in detail at the public hearing, as, and am I correct in remembering that you, Public Works is going to hold a community meeting in Golden Valley?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, thank you. I was amiss in overlooking that very comment. It's very important to note that upon consent of the board to schedule a public hearing, staff will be looking ahead towards establishing a public meeting, a public meeting in the Golden Valley area within the district, at a future time, but well in advance of the actual public hearing on the matter. So we would undertake that scheduling in the near future, however we wish to see the outcome of this action first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski.
There's no other...
I have two people that would like to speak to it.
Okay.
Item, Kathleen Michler.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Michler, 5485 North Laguna Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Okay, I sure hope we have these public meetings with Mr. Lutowski in Golden Valley. But if we do, we need the whole board there, because you are the board for Golden Valley Improvement District. So you need to be aware of what people are saying. So I'm going to still request that we have a evening meeting for the open public hearing, so that you're all here, unless you want to all come to Golden Valley, because you are the board. are the board. Okay. Anyway, what I want to say is, I'd like to requi, oh, I already did that. Between now and November 20th, I expect that you will pay close attention to this proposal because you all represent everyone in Golden Valley in this matter, as you take the place of a citizens' board that we normally have. This proposal reports a revenue loss of $50,000 over a four-year period, but doesn't offer any explanation why. Did you know that this proposal includes the water storage tank, upgrading the delivery system, and all of this during a period of lost revenue? Did you know that the administrative costs for Golden Valley Improvement District in 2015, it was $175,000? 2016, $557,000? 2017, $228,000? This puts a lot of questions in my mind and hopefully yours. The history and the, and the work here is not complete. Golden Valley Improvement District and the IFRD project have shared expenses, and we all know that the state of Arizona has a corporation commission that regulates utility Golden Valley Improvement District is not regulated by the state. If this proposal was put before that board, there'd be laughter beyond Mojave County. The people of Golden Valley are not opposed to a rate increase. We understand the increase in maintenance costs. We just want something reasonable. With water allocation set at $5,200, it's going to stunt growth. And did you know that the Pioneer Water in Golden Valley has no restrictions on water allocations? I don't understand why the county does. I hope I have given you enough questions here that you will take a close look at this before this November 20th hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Leanne Hogland-Smith?
Leanne Hogland-Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley. I have to say thank you for your transparency on your agendas with your backup documentation. Coming from, recently coming from northwest Indiana, we didn't have that luxury, and it really makes it informative for the public to understand the rationale behind the rate increases. In the backup document for item 18, the county went and said cost of living was around 62% over the last almost 10 years. But when you start looking at the water being used by people, and many of the people in Golden Valley are retired, as I said in a previous meeting, the projection for retired people is going up from 20 to 26% with the projected growth of Golden Valley only at 2.5%. They're probably using around 2,000 gallons. But one of the charges for 2,000 gallons is they're going to see a 99.9% increase. These are people on fixed incomes. These are people who have limited resources. And even if they use 5,000 gallons, that increases 65.9%. Now, if someone has enough money, a larger commercial industry who uses 12,000 gallons, they're going to experience 11.5% decrease. I'm asking you to really reevaluate this. Do not harm the people who have the least resources. You are their voices. Remember them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion for setting hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 18 to set the public hearing.
I have motion and second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson.
If I may, I see the mayor Nixon is here and councilman Lane and manager Cassens, and I'm sure they're here to support me on my security item. Maybe we could move to item 28, just in case they want to hit both of them?
Certainly. Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda, and at supervisor Johnson's request, we will move on to item number 28. Supervisor Rankin?
Thank you very much. I brought this back when we were doing the budget on August 7th. I thought it was unfair that the citizens of District 5 did not have any representation on this board for all of our budget issues. For those of you who are here, for those who read in the paper, we went back and forth about our sheriff's department that we have been trying to figure out a way to fund for as long as I've been here and even before. Unfortunately, this is, I'm going to take responsibility for this. This item was actually kind of written poorly, and that was, that came from me. It really should have said up to $1.8 million instead of one, you know, to take 1.8 million. That is the number that the legislature, through the flexibility language, has given counties this year. It goes from year to year. We don't know if we're going to have it next year. Our legislators have to fight for it. I believe in the last three years, Mike Hendricks, we've been given it, but it's not, it's not a given. We may get it next year, we may not. And I believed that we should take some of that money from some certain funds to help the sheriff. And I'm going to ask him to come down in a second, but before I do, I wanted to put some minds at ease. When I was thinking about where this money should come from, which we'll discuss here, it's a whole board decision, not just me, we talked about a lot of different things. Personally, I think it should, the majority of it should come from the post-closure landfill, post-closure fund. And the only reason I think that is because I asked our county administrator, Mike Hendricks, where he believed it would come from that would do the least damage. One of my ideas I threw out there to, out in the commu, well, it wasn't even in the community, it was in a private meeting, was the possibility of taking money from flood control from the cities, which we give, it's for a formula. We fought that fight four, five years ago when we took office and we got the cities more money, which was the right thing to do, and I was happy to do that. I want to put, I see that Lake Havasu people are here, I want to put their minds at ease that I have no intention of even asking for that this year. It was just something, you know, a lesson learned, I was just something in a conversation, and I'm sorry that it caused so much angst out there in Lake Havasu and in the cities itself. So with that being said, I want a discussion about what we can do. We only have until October 17th to ta, to take this money. And I, you know, we, we use different words. We use sweep, we use take. I'd like to say we are reallocating taxpayer money, like the gentlemen's kept talking about, to be fiscally conservative with the money we have. I, in good conscience, have a hard time asking people for more money when we have money sitting there. And if it's in a fund like the post-closure fund that we will not need for many, many years, that keeps being replenished, that is the fund I'd like to concentrate on. But before that, I'd like to bring the sheriff up so he could make his case on what he needs, and then maybe the board can discuss what we're willing to do.
I have a question before he comes up, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
I'm not sure how the wording, if it's correct, because the county fiscal obligations sweep is only for our fiscal obligations, not for pay raises. So I guess I would ask the county attorney if the authority for sweeps allows for pay raises.
I believe it does. Looking at the language of the statute, it says any county fiscal obligation, and that could be a wide range of things, would be including anything that we have, any kind of obligation. We have an obligation to pay our employees, which would be salaries. We'd have an obligation to pay their health benefits, pay their services, pay anything that relates to the county. So I believe it'd be broad enough to do that.
So increases would be, pay increases would be considered in that?
If that's, if that's in our budget, and our budget says that this is what we're planning to do, then it can be, I believe that it can be wide enough to include that. I don't think it's just debts. I think it'd be beyond just debts.
I, I believe you're stretching the point, and this is going to cause the state legislature to not look so favorably on this in the future.
If we never use it, they'll never give it to us again anyway. So I think that is something, if you feel strongly, maybe we need a legal opinion. It's the first I've heard of it. I wish some of these questions would come before we do these big votes, but since it hasn't, we'll have to take what our lawyer says. So I'd like to continue.
Chair Schuster, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Epsom, and of course, Madam Clerk. I'll be somewhat brief. I kind of look at this opportunity as the last opportunity for this year to accomplish what we've been trying to do from day one. When I took office 10 months ago, I did so with the intent of serving the citizens of Mojave County and providing necessary law enforcement and public safety service at the highest of levels. I came into the office with an understanding of the direction that we must go in, in order to accomplish this goal. Salary study comparing local agency compensation packages along with a staffing study was conducted. It was abundantly clear that we are well below staffing levels and our compensation package is nowhere near what it needs to be, and I think most of us agree on that. You've seen the documentation. I presented my proposal to the board earlier this year, outlining the critical need for the funding. This is a problem that's been years in the making, and it demands resolution. We can't wait till next year, next year, next year. That's what we're, we've been doing, and it's not working. When we hire law enforcement professionals, they commit themselves to this county and they commit themselves to the citizens. We in turn make a commitment to them. We offer them fair compensation, and they, the compensation should increase based on their tenure and experience. That's what we told them coming in, and we have failed in that commitment. And as a result, we've created revolving door effect at the sheriff's office for over the past 10 years. I really want to stress, and I need you to understand, we are spending millions and millions of dollars training new officers only to watch them move on to local agencies. That is not fiscally, fiscally sound. We can't keep doing it at this rate. My budget proposal earlier in the year included a complete compression adjustment along with adding 20 new deputy sheriffs. This proposal came in, as you probably remember, at $4.5 million. I was advised that there was not sufficient funding to accommodate that request, so I removed my proposal for the 20 additional deputies with the understanding that it's still needed. It's something I will continue to seek after this date, but we began to focus strictly on compression. I came before you with a $1.5 million compression issue which would fix the situation we currently are in. And I pointed out before, but I want to remind you, the sheriff's office currently has seven deputy sheriff positions less than we had 27 years ago. Population has more than doubled. Calls for service have more than tripled. This has to be addressed. I believe I have more than justified the need. I provided statistical data to this board showing we're grossly below the national, the state, and even the local level in both staffing and compensation. I was disappointed, my officers were disappointed. I think most importantly though, our residents were extremely disappointed at the outcome of the final budget meeting in August. We had a packed audience, it was a large group of all of our constituents. I think most of them spoke on the sheriff's behalf, saying fund the sheriff's office. And I do believe still that you as individuals, in talking with you, you're good people. I know individually you support the sheriff's office. Collectively, we must come together as a group to make this happen. So I'm optimistic. A little time has passed. Hopefully, a little reflection has been done. I'm asking you to reconsider my proposal in regards to compression. The residents of our county expect and deserve quality law enforcement and public safety services. They demand reasonable response times and appropriate follow-up. They demand appropriate staffing levels to ensure their safety and their well-being. Our citizens have reached out to me, our citizens have reached out to you, the board, and they're asking for funding in order to maintain order, protect life and property, and enforce the laws of the state. So here's what I'm proposing today. Looking at our overall sheriff's budget for the last four years, we normally have a remaining balance of anywhere from $1 million to $1.5 million that's returned to the general fund. This is funding that I have not been able to access as it's largely salary savings. We have these salary savings as we continue to lose qualified officers year after year. In point of order, I'd like to make you very aware that currently our jail is 37 positions down. Our jail is 37 positions down. This is a tremendous safety concern, this is a litigation concern, and it must be fixed. I'm asking you, the board, to reconsider funding the sheriff's office $1.5 million to immediately address these concerns, to fix the compression, to attract and retain quality employees. I'm also asking the board to allow me to access my full budget, so that I may use overages to augment and supplement our compression issues and operational issues. And what I mean by that is if we're not able to come up with the full compression, we have money in our balance to go ahead and fund that, but it's a stopgap measure. It's a one-time thing. We talk about sustainability. If I were able to take a portion of our overages and apply that towards any budget fix you may have, we will be better off, but we'll be running understaffed. You can't have it both ways, and I'm not willing to cut positions. We cannot do that again. Lastly, I'm asking you, the board, to authorize any future end-of-the-year overages be added directly and independently to the following year sheriff's budget. This will ensure sustainability in future years, meaning if we have $1.2 million left over this year, whatever our budget is set at next year, that would not be inclusive till after the budget is established. So I want to thank you very much for your time. I implore you to make the hard decision, I know it is, but I'm asking you to make the right decision, decision for the sake of public safety. And I'll take any questions in a minute. I was asked by Jennifer Jones Esposito to request the option for her to speak on this item, as it's not on the public speaking agenda. Any questions?
Chairman Watson?
Mrs. Esposito can speak, if you'll remain up there.
Sure.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Jennifer Jones Esposito. My address is La Posa North, LTVA in Quartzsite. However, I am a property owner in the Golden Valley Improvement District, and my husband is a property owner here in Kingman. I'm asking you to support this proposal to shift the funds. I think that as a candidate for the Arizona House of Representatives, I can assure you, doing this will not prejudice me, should I be elected, in giving counties the opportunity to move funds around for needed purposes. I think that if there's a question about whether it's okay to do that for salary, I'm sure that Sheriff Schuster could shift his own budget around, pay the salary out of some other portion, and then use that for, I mean, Mojave County is really the poster child for this, as I said during the budget discussion. There are overages in so many funds that are not being used, and it's not the county's money, it's the people's money. It belongs to the people of Mojave County. And overwhelmingly, at the budget discussion, so many people spoke in favor of funding the sheriff's department. And I'm sure that you guys are all aware, I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe in lower taxes and smaller government, and the two things that I do believe in funding are roads, you know, infrastructure, and public safety. You know, we, we're trying to expand the K-9 program here. safety. You know, we, we're trying to expand the K-9 program here. I know they probably could use some help, too. But when you have excess money in funds and you're not using it, basically, you're sitting on the people's money. And compression is a problem also in La Paz County. We have the same problem down there. I talked to the sheriff about that issue and the previous sheriff. So, you know, this is the problem that happens in both counties. When the county doesn't pay enough, those officers are trained by the county, and they're stolen by the cities. They don't have to leave to get a better job. They just maybe have to drive a little farther. We have a lot of people in the sheriff's department who are dedicated employees. They don't want to leave, but, you know, money is money. Especially with those experienced deputies, it would be nice to be able to show them we appreciate their dedication for staying without a substantive raise for so many years. I don't know if there's anybody else here who would like to speak to this issue, but I do really appreciate you giving me the opportunity, and I hope that you will support Supervisor Angus in this proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Members of board, questions to Sheriff Schuster?
I have a question.
Sheriff Schuster, I'm, I'm a little confused. Just several days ago, you sat in a meeting with myself, Coral Lloyd, the finance director and the county manager, and I believe Supervisor Watson was there. And you were shown a way to work this out, a way to fix comp, compression issues for this year, allowing the board to work with the legislator and try to get some supermajority legislature passed where we can come up with a sales tax, which would be a reoccurring source so that we could continue to, to fund your budget and your employee raises. So I was surprised to see that we're back talking about sweeps again when we gave you the option to go forward. So can you, can you help me understand?
Yes, Supervisor Bishop, I might have been confused. I'm not throwing out the $1.5 million. I'm hoping that you'll approve that. What I'm saying is, if it does not go through and it's negotiated down or there's nothing, I have to do something. So if I use my internal budget, and we talked about this, you're right, that's just a stopgap measure. I'm not going to be able to fix compression to the degree that we're at. So I guess I'm saying, this is my need. I understand that if it's not accommodatable, I will have to take the, the other road, which would be working within my own budget, which I could not do before. But then again, I'm taking the salary savings to use towards compression, and I have to make sure that's sustainable the following year, unless you can guarantee to me that it would be.
So am I correct in understanding that either one of these methods would work for you, either the one we discussed several days ago, or the sweeping of the funds that Supervisor Angus is?
Ideally, Ms. Bishop, ideally, I just want to fix my compression. It's critical. I don't think I can do it solely with the salary savings currently in the budget. I'll certainly put what I can towards that, but if in total, we can come up with the $1.5 to fix it, I will be satisfied for this year.
Okay. I, I just wanted to point out that there's two options here for you, and we, we do support the sheriff's office and you as, as the newly-elected sheriff, and we want to do the right thing, but we want to be fiscally responsible. And if we fix your problem this year, and you give your employees their pay raises that they certainly deserve, then next year, if we can't do it again, if we don't get sweep authority, or if we don't get a tax increase, are you going to take those pay raises away from your employees? How, how will you handle the lack of your budget money at that time?
That's the very issue we're discussing. If I give more than I can count on coming back in, I don't know the answer to that, Supervisor Bishop. It depends on our staffing. We're critically low now, which means there's a lot of excess funding in my budget. If I fill those positions, I won't have that funding, so I cannot offer a guarantee. That's why, and the third option that I'd mentioned, I would like to roll over any excess funding to have a contingency in that event. I simply don't want to turn back money at the end of the year while saying, "I need money." It makes no sense to me.
I agree. And I want to support pay raises for your people, but I do not want to, next year, take it away, because I can imagine what that would do for morale. So that, that's where I am. You know, I'm, I'm not willing to do something for one year that I can't do the next year and the next year. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop, it's completely out of my privy. It's in your, your hands. I'm simply saying I would really like to fix compression this year. These are options. These are options that came up before. I appreciate Mr. Hendricks sending me in the direction. I'm just doing evaluations, saying it has to be sustainable, and it has to be enough to make it worthwhile. If I don't have enough to fix the compression, I don't want to try and Band-Aid it. Do a little bit this year, Band-Aid it. I don't see any sense in doing that.
Right. I agree with that, and it looks like that's what this, this agenda item might be doing for you. So I'm, I'm just, I know it doesn't look like it to you, but I'm looking out for the welfare of the Mojave County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Chairman Watson?
Thank you for that laughter.
Chairman Watson? You know, I, I brought this back again, like I said, because District 5 did not have representation, and now they do. And I thought that it was worth bringing back solely for that, for nothing else. I said up to $1.8 million, because that is what the legislature gave us the authority to take. I should have said the up to, not just the 1.8, because that is given. I wasn't privy to that meeting. You know, sometimes things happen up here in Kingman, and it doesn't filter down. We can't all meet, but I understand there was a meeting. I heard about it late last week. And so when we talked about it and I looked at that, I thought, well, that's a good way of taking a little from this and a little from that. And, you know, if we take this money that we are given the option to do now, then we would have the money next year from his budget savings. So it does kind of cover next year. If we take his budget savings this year, and we don't get this authority next year, then, then we're going to have, have problems. And again, it's about prioritizing. Like Jennifer Jones said, I believe the biggest responsibility of county government is to protect its citizens. And it's going to come down to all next year, when we talk about budgeting and we talk about the philosophy of this county, we're going to have to look at our budget. Supervisor Johnson, his idea this year, he wanted a 3.5% across-the-board cut. You know, I, I don't think that, I think that is an interesting proposal. I think we should, we should definitely do targeted cuts. My point is, we as a board have to say, this is what's most important to us, and then we have to look at everything else. And so I think that from that starting point, if we could take some from this sweep authority, which isn't theft, I mean, we can make an argument that all taxation is theft. I don't want to go there. But we have this ability. It's taxpayers' money. They've sort of, they've indicated that they want to help the sheriff. I, I'm, I'm willing to go back and, and take a little less and use some of his, the money, and see if we can come up with a way to get through this year so we don't bleed more officers. I wasn't even aware of the problems at the, excuse me, at the jail until recently, and oh my gosh, it's, it's terrible. And we're, there's nothing I think you want as a citizen is overworked, underexperienced officers. Am I correct?
Yes, you are, ma'am.
And we are dangerously close. I saw the overtime numbers. So with that in mind, I don't know how Chairman wants to progress with this.
We have six people signed up that would wish to speak. If the, if the board has any more further questions for Sheriff Schuster, now would be the time.
I have a question. Is it an either/or for you? Is it either this proposition funding you now, or working within the meeting that you had? Is it an either/or issue? Is that what I'm understanding? I guess that's what I need to understand.
Supervisor Wakamoto, it's not an either/or. I, I've put out a number that I need to fix compression. That's $1.5 million. If we do it through sweeps, great, if that's available. If I have to use my internal budget, my position is if I use too much of my internal budget, we're going to be in trouble at the end of the year. I still have to hire staff. That money is not just extra. That money is salary savings, and it's significant because we are down numerous positions. But as that staffing gets put back in place, that budget will shrink. So I have to concern myself with, it'd be a fine line I'd have to walk. Do I hire in 10, leave 15 vacancies? Where is my number to make sure I don't go over budget? So that's why I'm asking for the board's assistance. And I want to clarify, it's been a rough year. You guys are in a very difficult position. I know you support law enforcement. I've known all of you for some time, and I know you support law enforcement. You have a bigger responsibility than most. No, you have to make direction and decision with the public money. So I empathize with that, and there should be no scoffing at the fact. I know this board supports law enforcement, and I thank you for that, and I want to go on the record of saying that.
Well, it's important to me, because 90% of my district is covered by the sheriff's department. And it's important to me that the basic law enforcement is there. But the other thing that came up with the prison is the staffing there and the situation you have there that will affect the entire county if things get out of hand. So both of those really press, I mean, give me heartburn. So I'm just trying to figure out if it, if it's an either/or situation with you, or, because sustainability, as we have said, you and I have spoken, that it's really important for me to be able to continue to, and if this is what we're looking at, you know, thank you for your, I mean, I, I guess I'm just babbling right now and thinking to myself, but it, it is really important that just the basic services are available to people, like law enforcement.
Supervisor Wakamoto, I hope I've answered your question. There's not an either/or for me. There's a target goal that I'm looking at. As long as it's sustainable, I leave the direction up to the board on, on the avenue to pursue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I have six people that would like to speak to this issue. Leanne Hoagland-Smith.
Good morning. Leanne Hoagland-Smith, 3981, South Centennial Road, Golden Valley. First, I really want to thank Supervisor Angus, because her recommendation, from my perspective, and I have over 20 years of organizational development, consulting, and training, not to mention 20 years in corporate, including procurement, represents, from my perspective, both efficient and effective leadership. Thank you for that. The other notice is millions of dollars in training lost. Turnover is costly, extremely costly. When you're looking at a 30% turnover in some of your departments, when you can't fund the jail, we're talking about potential litigation, not to fund the sheriff's department, not to do these sweeps or budget allocations, is putting your, putting you even further in the hole. And one of the things I tell my clients, when you're in the hole, the first rule is to stop digging. And I think it's time for this board to stop digging. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Watson. Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity. It's always nice to see you, but frankly, we've got to stop meeting this way.
Mr. Cassens, I, I need your full name and address.
My name is Charlie Cassens. I am a citizen and city manager of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, citizen of Mojave County, and my address is 2330 McCulloch Boulevard, North, Lake Havasu City.
Thank you.
I'm here today because word was on the street that you may be considering a sweep of the flood control and possibly other funds collected by the county that are generated by city property owners and dedicated to specific projects within their respective cities. Obviously, we would object to this, not only because our $13 million, five-year capital program that is dedicated to mitigating storm damage and protecting property depends on that money, but also because the county already keeps about a third of the nearly $3 million in flood control taxes that are already generated by Lake Havasu City taxpayers alone. Supervisor Angus, your published comments that the county shares flood control funds with the cities is simply not accurate. In fact, it is city taxpayers that contribute to the county, and very generously, I might add. Speaking of the value that the cities add to Mojave County, I would like to share a few stats with you. 62% of Mojave County's residents live within the incorporated cities and fund almost 2/3 of the property tax revenues for the county. Lake Havasu City property owners alone comprise over 26% of the county population and contribute almost $18.4 million, or just under 38% of the total property taxes collected by the county this year. 87% of the sales, subject to sales taxes in the county, come from within the cities, 38% from Lake Havasu City alone. And virtually all of Mojave County's economic growth is occurring within the cities. I do not speak for the other cities in the county, but this year in Lake Havasu City, in addition to the over $18 million in property taxes extracted by the county, it will also enjoy another $2.4 million in the quarter cent sales tax, and $5.5 million in state shared revenue attributable to Lake Havasu City. And as I mentioned earlier, we might get about $2 million back for flood control projects, but for the most part, Lake Havasu City citizens get very little in return for their huge financial contribution to the county, over $26 million this year. Lake Havasu City citizens cannot depend on Mojave County for water, sewer, stormwater management, law enforcement, fire protection, or street maintenance within the cities. May I continue?
You've got a few more seconds.
When nearly 2/3 of the county's population resides in cities that fund their own operations and receive very little in the form of county services, it makes one wonder where all those millions of our dollars are going and why the county still cannot make ends meet. To that end, I would like to make a couple of suggestions. One, restore the position of county manager. While I appreciate the circumstances that prompted the change to county administrator, the situation now requires a professional to bring you potential solutions, not budgetary problems to solve. Two, instruct your county manager to develop a spending plan that limits expenses to within projected revenues. This can be accomplished by working with staff, elected officials, and the sheriff, to direct key resources to accomplishing only those tasks that are mandated or considered essential public services, and eliminate or defer everything else. This is not easy. It takes leadership and courage, but it works. It worked for Lake Havasu City, and it can work in Mojave County. After all, it is what we all want the state to do, so it will quit raiding our funds, correct? And three, get back to providing good public policy direction and leave the day-to-day operation of the county to staff. I respect you all and hope you can find some value in these comments. I appreciate your time and attention, and I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cassens. Questions?
Mr. Cassens, I want to thank you. I, I'm sorry I ripped open that scab again that we went through several years ago, but now that you've spoken, I, I'm glad we did. I, I think yours, a lot of your suggestions are right, spot on. And I hope we, as we go into the next budget year, like we talked about, where we have to reprioritize, really, really look at ourselves honestly, and what our, what our goal is and what our purpose is as a county government. I hope we take some of those suggestions to heart. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Michael Boone?
Michael Boone, 2210, Palo Verde North, Lake Havasu City. Respective attorney, you may want to research that a little bit more. I think there's a thing about increasing things versus stabilizing things. I think there's some case law. When you have the opportunity, you may want to look into that. Ms. Angus, I hope you're going to rewrite the, the agenda item so it reads correctly, because right now, you know, you take a Philadelphia lawyer to figure it out, what you're asking for and what you want to do. I'm not against sheriff funding. What I am against is not utilizing resources you have first. Deputies leave and police officers leave for a number of reasons, and it's not always money. Some of it is lack of promotability, infighting within department, a perception of the department's not looking after them. I worked for a department that was understaffed, 90 calls a shift, most of them manned with a gun calls, and we managed it with two officers and a sergeant per shift. The issue has to be, you got to look out and see what you have available. We supplemented our problem by hiring police reserves. We bought- We bought police reserves in to cover shifts when we didn't have enough officers. We put police reserves on functions like the city fair and different functions. We billed the people for that. That covered that funding. Every officer we had did not have a take-home car. It makes no sense to the officer that lives, or deputy that lives in Lake Havasu to be going to his beat over by Kingman. That makes no sense. That's why it's called a resident deputy program. The car stays at the resident, and the deputy patrols the resident, which he has. You've got grants out there. I keep talking to you about grants, and I feel it's just falling on deaf ears. DHS have grants. The National Safety Council has grants. The Department of Transportation will give you traffic units, radar, cars, and employees for three years before you have to take that debt over. I just think there's just entirely too much. People just scan, okay, let's write a check. You know, the sheriff is right. I deal with law enforcement executives all the time. What he is saying is not what's said from California to Florida exactly. You have correction, private correction companies that offer correction services. You have one out at Kingman. Backfill those positions with private sector. Use private sector to fill call-offs. You don't have to necessarily have a whole contract for that, cover that jail. You can bring these people in and augment it. But I think the sheriff, in all due respect to him, needs to have somebody in his organization that understands this and understands how to get this money, because the money's out there. Because you can't tell me that you can't get the money when I deal with law enforcement agencies all the time in California. I'm a trainer. That's the first thing that gets cut out of the budget. But I've showed them how to get money for that training. I helped an agency buy a simulator on a grant. But so far, all I have heard from this sheriff's department is deaf ears, like you're trying to step on somebody's toes. I've seen no reach-out. One quick last thing. You've got hundreds of retired police executives in this county who are willing to sit on a board and help the sheriff. All he has to do is reach out and reach out fairly and stop the perception he has of a fiefdom.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Mr. Boone?
You.
I think we're going to be seeing a lot of you.
Betcha.
Where did you work?
I worked for the City of Oakland, and I worked for the City of East Palo Alto.
And what was your title?
My title was detective supervisor.
Okay. And when you talk about grants, where do the grants come from?
Grants come from the federal government.
Right. And where does that come from?
That comes from the federal taxpayer.
Comes from our pocket. It's not money that falls from the sky, and at any time, the federal government can take these grants away.
Negative, as long as you're complying with the grant.
Well, we have a president who's now saying that if the City of Oakland doesn't do the sanctuary. My point is, it's just a personal problem I have of people talk about grants, because it's not money that falls from the sky, it's taxpayer money.
And I have a problem with people to try to misrepresent that, like you're doing. The City of East Palo Alto was a county patrolled area until it became a municipality. We started off with twenty-five officers. We were working sixteen-hour shifts. I had to buy cars. I had a limited amount of money to buy radios. I had, we didn't have a traffic program. I got two motorcycles and four officers from the Department of Transportation for three years. After that three years, we had the money to pick that tab up. We had twenty-five police reserves. The issue is, you can't sit back and write a check. You have to be creative. You have to have people in that organization that are creative.
Mr. Boone, appreciate your comments, and maybe you can visit with the sheriff and Supervisor Angus and share your ideas and your expertise.
I just feel it's falling on deaf ears.
I just recommended that we visit, sir. Roxanne Ortiz.
It's Royanne Ortiz at 1550 Monovista Drive. I wanted to let you know that I do support the funding of the sheriff today. I think the primary duty of this board is the services to protect and serve the people. Now, these police officers, at any time, put their lives on the line. You guys, we're paying you to be the board of supervisors. You're not putting your lives on the line for the people. The sheriff is. All those deputies are putting their lives on the line. You never know what could happen when you pull somebody over for a ticket or when you go to their house for a domestic dispute. It's a dangerous job. They deserve to be compensated adequately for it, and I think that's our primary duty, and if you have to cut funds somewhere else, oh, well. And I also did want to mention one other thing. Every single year, your revenues go up. The tax rate doesn't go up, but the revenues go up. So why is that happening? Because the value of people's properties go up. So even though you haven't raised the tax rate, you're still getting more money because the value of the properties are more, so the people are paying more taxes. When the sales tax go up, it's because people are buying more, so you're getting more income from that. So it's not as if your revenue is static. It's not. It goes up every year. So the excuse was, well, if it's not sustainable, then I don't want to vote for it. That's BS. You can find the money. It's critical. Thank you.
Mayor Dixon.
Good morning and welcome to Mojave County.
It's just like a council meeting. Mr. Sup, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, my name is Mark Nixon. I reside at 7070 Circula de Hacienda, Lake Havasu City. In light of Supervisor Angus' commitment this morning that she will not be proposing to sweep flood control monies, I'm not going to stand here and go through a detailed opposition, so I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Stephen Robinson.
Stephen Robinson, 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Supervisor Johnson, you made a statement about meeting mandatory expenses. I was looking at the statutes that, or the budget bills that were passed, and it said that you can meet the obligations from any source of the county funds, whether it's special taxing, countywide taxing districts, or other funds. And according to the budget itself, it stated that the mandated service by the sheriff's department is to provide for all public safety within the unincorporated areas of Mojave County. So there's clearly no doubt that the 1.8 million that can be up to that amount, that can be swept from these different funds, is legitimate for any use by the county. The county already sweeps one and a quarter million dollars from these special taxing districts, 1.15 million from the three countywide taxing districts based on a per parcel charge. That money is theoretically for the reimbursement of expenses of the assessor and treasurers and a little tiny bit of the attorney's office, but those monies don't get allocated to that, those offices. However, when you tax, when you have fees that are paid for planning and zoning, like automation fees, there's six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in those different funds that are being reserved for those funds year after year. There's currently four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in the automation fee or fund account for planning and zoning. Right now, in the library district, you have enough money based upon the county's own valuation to build a building of forty-six to fifty-two thousand square feet. When some analysis said we need seventeen thousand square feet, which would be about two to and a half to three million. So there's three million dollars that can either go to keep reducing the property taxes in the library, or it could be utilized for helping a very vitally important issue, the sheriff's department. You have this waste tire fund. The board's already said that there won't be a building of a monofil where you put all the tires. You're not going to bury all the tires. You're not going to build a plant to shred the tires, because we're already shipping them out to crumb rubber manufacturing in Phoenix. So there's two million dollars in that fund that's a dead fund. You cannot, except for this legislation, you cannot take that money out. I encourage taking a million dollars out of that fund, leaving the other million for future possible projects, but I don't believe we should be building those kinds of things for waste tires. Use the money where it's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now can we just kind of cut to the chase? All right. So hearing all of this, what's on the table is reallocating some money from funds. What Mike Hendricks told me was his suggestion was to go for the landfill post-closure fund. And what did you tell me you felt comfortable with taking?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, what I said is, when asked what would be the, you know, where would I take the funds, I believed what would be least damaging to the county was a closure and post-closure fund. It wasn't something that I was going to recommend, because as we've discussed earlier, that, you know, if you don't have a revenue stream, you don't fund operation and maintenance. But with that said, I believe that that fund is fairly healthy. I believe that it could withstand at least a half a million dollars removed from it, and we wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't damage our closure, post-closure program significantly, and it wouldn't damage the county significantly.
Okay. But I believe you and I had another, you said you would, because I originally said eight hundred thousand. That's really where I want to start. I want to start at eight hundred thousand, and then...
And, Mr. Chairman, you know, whether you're talking five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, I believe the fund has in excess of ten million dollars in it, and people have to understand that we have to sure for the closure and post-closure care of the land that we have opened in our landfills for thirty years in the future, and if we don't do that, that's a liability on the county. That's a federal requirement, so it's also a state requirement, and we have to do cost estimates regarding that. So we have about roughly the closure, post-closure care costs are, let's call it, nine million dollars. If you took five hundred thousand or even eight hundred thousand, I believe we'd still have sufficient monies. But those funds have actually been generated and collected since late 1980s, so they didn't happen overnight. And currently, I believe that we're collecting just about sufficient amounts of money from our closure, post-closure charges to keep that fund healthy and to be able to take care of our landfill. And you've got to realize also, you know, I heard some giggles, that those landfills are guaranteed assets for Mojave County for not only this generation, but our next generation and our next generation. So to preserve that asset is incredibly important for Mojave County, and to be able to operate landfills, we have to have, be responsible for certain obligations.
And I appreciate that, and because we've done so good, and like so many of our other funds, because we've done such a great job, we have this money, and you've taken money from this fund before. We took it...
Yes, we borrowed from the fund before. We haven't taken from the fund. We also utilize some of the fund to pay for the housing for the people that administer the landfill programs. We borrowed for the fund, but we paid it back with interest.
You paid, did you pay it back when you used it for the development services building?
What I told you earlier is, it was public works building, not development service. Public works building housed landfill administration and our landfill people, also a portion of the public works director's salary was paid from landfill. So landfill paid for a portion of public works department, road department paid for a public, portion of public works department, facilities paid for a portion of public works department, parks paid for a portion of public works department, and GVID paid for a portion of public works department. And I believe we sent you that board action form where the board approved the mixed funding for the construction of that facility.
Okay. So can the sheriff come back down here? So I want to make sure, when I make my motion, that it is correct in its wording. I've been forewarned because the wording of my agenda item wasn't on target.
Chairman Watson, before a motion's made, I have a final comment.
Certainly. Supervisor Bishop.
I can go ahead and make that comment now, but if there's excess funds, I would think we would want to reduce the fees at the landfill or extend the hours there. But basically, what I wanted to just point out was social security. I wanted to bring that into the conversation, because social security today is in trouble because of the money that people paid into it was not kept in reserve, but rather it was spent on various other government needs, and we're seeing the damage that was done to that now. The flood control district tax and the landfill fund is set aside for very specific uses and restricted as such, and I agree with Supervisor Angus. We have been given a one-time sweep authority by legislation, but it's, is it the right thing to do? I'm in agreement that it is not the right thing to do, because next year, in the next year, we have the same problems, and whether or not we get sweep authority again is up to the state legislation. So until we can get the sheriff a reoccurring revenue source, the sweeping of these funds, I think is financially a responsible and the wrong thing to do. So that's, that was my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. And I'd like to make a comment before you start, too. It's taken us almost thirty years to accumulate ten point three million, so any movement of these funds is going to have to be an extremely important movement for me to justify. I haven't seen no program or plan or agenda for your reorganization or just how you're going to expend these dollars, Sheriff. I support you a hundred percent. You know that. And in a meeting we had just two weeks ago, we outlined how you can, with your current budget, deal with a great deal of the problems you have currently. So I'm not entirely against right now, but anything past five hundred dollars moving on this, I'm going to have a real difficult time. I can appreciate your problems, but we have no pillars of money. Those don't exist. Mojave County, as we collect our taxes with property tax and sales tax, we're close to the bottom of the fifteen counties in the state of Arizona, of which many people don't even realize. We pay that price two different ways. Because we have low taxes, we have more people coming to take care of and take advantage of our services. And it also brings the other part of those, it brings a level of poverty with it also. So we're in a two-edged sword here. We have low taxes, a great demand on our resources, and no in insight on how to cure this. So I am, I'm very hesitant to make this recommendation, but I will support a portion of what you want to do. I could probably support up to five hundred thousand dollars for movement from the post-closure fees, but I do with great reluctance and some trepidation. I haven't seen your plan yet. I trust that you will put a great deal of those dollars in solving the problems with the jail and the jail personnel over there. I do know that you've got a big problem over there. You're shy of thirty-seven positions. I hope that you can fill those as soon as you possibly can, so we're not liable to any large lawsuits that might be occurring, because we didn't have people there to oversee and monitor. So I just wanted to make those points very clear.
Chairman Watson, can I respond?
Certainly.
I appreciate everything you're saying, I truly do, and I do appreciate your support. I know it's a difficult position. We're all in. I wish we were fiscally sound, and I wouldn't be up here. It seems like this has been the norm for me since I took office, and that's unfortunate. Under the new initiatives, and if there's a better way that I can do this, please let me know. On the initial budget, I was told to create new initiatives for the compression, and that had the detailed compensation, pay increase study for every member of the sheriff's office. So if I get it to you in a better format, for future use is what I'm talking now, I certainly want you to be able to make an educated decision, but the money is a hundred percent based for compression and compression alone. And I just further want to say one thing to the entire board. Please understand the position I'm in. I'm struggling on a daily basis to provide the service that people need, and I look long-term. Having worked here for twenty-seven years myself, this is not a new situation, and we're throwing money after money after money in training, and if I don't have the staff, we're not getting it done. So I appreciate both sides of the aisle, and I want you to do what you feel is right. I don't, I'm just simply stating a need.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Well, with all this new information, reading the tea leaves, when I heard from Chairman Watson and the board, I'm going to make a motion that we move $500,000 from the landfill post-closure fund and allow the sheriff to utilize the budget he has, up to 1.2 million. Is that it? Is that the number?
We're anticipating a 1.4 overage. What I'm requesting is any overage be available for use. And certainly, we're not looking to use that entire amount. We want to have leftover to ensure we don't put ourselves in a position next year that we can't fund those raises.
Okay. And any overage that he has at the end of the fiscal year for budget compression, for salary compression issues in his department, in the sheriff's department? How's that sound?
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in a little bit on this? One of the things that, you know, one of the areas that the money's coming from is the jail, the jail vacancies. And I believe the amount of money that finance is looking at for vacancy savings is in the realm of 1.5 million dollars. Obviously, you don't want to use all of that for vacancy save, or for compensation. However, one of the reasons that the jail is a critical area is because your head count, I believe, is about 550 inmates at the jail roughly, which is way higher than we've ever been before. And so one of the things that I've done, contrary to, I believe what Mr. Casson says alleged earlier, is try to set up a meeting between Justice Department with the County Attorney's Office probation and the sheriff for next, for this week, and take a look at pre-trial services, which is a service that actually takes people away from the jail and manages them outside of the jail, those people that don't need to be incarcerated, to try to lower that head count, to come up with a lesser number of people in the jail, and try to get a comfort level with the sheriff on how many positions he can leave vacant from that. And actually, that will establish a revenue stream. And then that would free up considerable amounts of money, I believe, for utilize for your specific purpose if the board approves this motion. But I believe, the reason I wanted to weigh in, I believe that the way your direction is going, looking at the money at the end of next year, he won't be able to do anything with his employees until this next fiscal year. And what we want to do is take a look at vacancy savings currently and what occurred this past year, and make projections and plan on utilizing those vacancy savings immediately. That's what I understood, if you wanted to...
Mr. Hendricks, that's correct. We're looking for an immediate access to these projected overages based on salary savings with the authority to roll over whatever is left over for potential compression increase situations we run into, because staffing has to go up at some point.
So it would be allowing the sheriff to work with administration to identify available vacancy savings to utilize for compensation, to address compensation issues within the sheriff's department. That's, I believe, how, the direction that this would need to be worded, if I understood...
Okay, so do I need to make an amended motion?
Please do.
Okay, I'm gonna, okay, so start over. We're going to move 500,000 from the landfill post-closure fund and allow the county administrator to work and to identify... Help, help, please.
Work with the sheriff's office to identify the vacancy savings that can be utilized for, to solve his compensation issues, a portion of his compensation issues within the sheriff's department.
What he said. Okay, that's the motion.
Will you accept that?
Is that okay?
Clerk?
Okay.
Okay.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Angus was correct in that I proposed a 3.5 percent cut of the budget during budget talks, which wasn't that long ago. And that was to actually balance our budget. We are $2.8 million in the hole going into next year. You're proposing a half million dollar sweep, another million, million and a half of savings, that's 2 million that we will be in the hole in addition to the 2.8 million we're already in the hole this year. You know, the federal government just went, what, 20 trillion? I think that really, we shouldn't be doing this at this time. We just had a budget hearing, you know? It has nothing to do with whether we like or dislike, employees think they're worth it or not worth it. We have no way to cover this debt next year, is my problem. So for that reason, I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
I'll be voting no on this. Not no to the sheriff in working within his budget to fix his compression issues, but no to the sweeps. I can't go there. I think it's wrong. I think it's not timely, and I agree with Supervisor Johnson. It's, we just had budget hearings, and we don't have the money.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, those in favor, signify. We probably ought to go roll call. Signify by saying aye.
Supervisor Angus?
Aye.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Okay, back to the regular agenda and regular order. I believe we're back to item number 22. Is that correct? Item number 22, for the discussion, possible action, provide direction to staff while moving forward with the public auction of 802 Beale, Kingman, Arizona. This has been continued by the board as their August 21st meeting of 2017. This is brought by Mr. Hendricks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. When we brought this 802 building before the board in, at your August meeting, there was a hint that there might be some justification to keep this building and to utilize it for other things. You graciously allowed me to reach out to the rest of the departments and elected officials to ask them if they had any viable uses for the facility. I didn't receive any positive responses that anybody wanted to utilize the facility. So our recommendation from staff is to go ahead and approve this, us to move to auction for this facility.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 22.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, to move forward, to move, provide direction to staff moving forward for the public auction. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 23, discussion, possible action, that for the approval or adopt the illicit discharge detection and elimination program document, which is designed to provide written procedures to systematically file and eliminate sources of non-stormwater. I'm going to have Mr. Walsh come up and finish out. Item number 23.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Item 23.
I'll second it.
Second, discussion. There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 24, discussion, possible action for the approval and adoption of a stormwater management program.
Someone signed up, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion approved.
You've got it. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 25, discussion, possible action, acknowledge the quarter cent county general excise tax adopted under Resolution Number 99-148 as a source of the construction services funding for the construction of a new four-story, approximately 66,461 square foot Superior Court building at 401 East Spring in Kingman, Arizona. Mr. Lutowski.
Chairman Watson, members of the board, this board item concerns the proposed Law and Justice Center construction, particularly construction of the new Law and Justice Center building, which would be completed. And what we found in working with the Finance Department is the quarter cent billing sales tax fund is capable of supporting in whole the construction of the new four-story Law and Justice Center at an estimated cost of $19.9 million. The quarter cent sales tax is anticipated by Sunset to have approximately $20.1 million unencumbered available for such work. And as a result, staff is requesting board consideration and acknowledgement that the quarter cent sales tax fund be a funding source for the new Law and Justice Center, as well as acknowledge staff working, what we do is we work backwards in schedule. We see that the quarter cent sales tax fund will be capable of funding the prosecution of the construction beginning in January of 2019 and working back from there. We're identifying May of 2018 as the best timeframe by which to submit plans to review. As you likely know, plan review and approvals only provide one year's time to move forward to construction. So hence, because of this finding, we would not be in a position to submit for plan approval at this very moment, but instead wait till the May 2018 timeframe to best align with the availability of funds.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. Questions for Mr. Lutowski?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you. Is the architect included in that 19 million? So that'll be, or is that in addition?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, the board appropriated an alternate funding source previously for the architectural design services contract. So this is not inclusive of the architectural services, as those are already funded through a previous initiative. But they do include all permit fees as well as construction management.
So everything that's in there will be done with the quarter cent?
That's correct, yes, under this item.
That's all I can question to have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. We do have one person signed up that would like to speak to the item. Leanne Hoagland-Smith.
Leanne Hoagland-Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Okay, I'm going to have a little ignorance here, and I have to say thank you to Supervisor Angus for giving me some insight. I understand about 20 years ago, there was a quarter cent tax allowed for building, my understanding, and I may be in error, the courthouse, the jail, as well as the administration building. Some of these funds are redirected to build the development services building, which I understand currently is about 50 percent lack of occupancy. So I'm just a little confused as to why the courthouse wasn't addressed, given this money was allocated for the courthouse. And, you know, that fund expires December 31st, 2019, I believe. And it just, this action just doesn't inspire confidence. Where did that, why wasn't the money directed to where the money was supposed to go? I guess is my question. I think it's a valid question to ask, to answer the constituents. Why do you have a building at 50 percent occupancy? That's costing the taxpayers money. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm tempted also, but I'm going to stay neutral, I think.
What's not on the agenda to discuss then?
Pardon me?
What's not on the agenda to discuss then?
Right. Okay. Chairman, would entertain a motion for item number 25?
I make a motion that we approve item 25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 26, discussion, possible action, set a public hearing for October 2nd, 2017 regarding the acceptance of Cali Lucero from Avendia Obregon to Avendia Verde in Mojave County Regular roadway maintenance system for, and further direct the county engineer to file with Board of Supervisors a report and map the proposed highway, roadway, I'm sorry, and give proper notice to the public hearing. I'll make a motion for approval. Item number 26.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 27, discussion, possible action, acknowledge the receipt and refer to Public Works petition to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting Fortuna Court from Stockton Hill Road to the west end of Fortuna Court, approximately 650 feet in the general east to west course and direction, accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance. I'll make a motion for acceptance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have addressed item 28. We now move to item number 29. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the Internet, we're living in an ever-changing atmosphere of increased threats from hacking, malware, and social engineering that endangers our county computers and the county website. Currently, new employees must attend a cybersecurity training session. All county employees can voluntarily attend an annual cybersecurity training session each October. The county encounters threats daily in the form of malware, viruses, phishing, and social engineering. Our information technology department has firewalls and email security systems in place to block certain types of activities. But our security is only good as its weakest link. I think all of us have read or heard about the Equifax data breach affecting 143 million people. Our county system is vulnerable, and any county employee can unintentionally cause problems that can affect all of us. So the need for the annual cybersecurity training to be mandatory for all county employees, not just for our new hires. Other city and county governmental agencies have already incorporated mandatory cyber training or are planning to do so in the near future. State governments like Colorado, Florida, Illinois, Maryland, New Hampshire, Pennsylvania, Utah, West Virginia have already had mandatory training in place. Proposing this agenda item is a necessary step to show we are doing all we can to curb any malicious attacks to Mojave County. All new employees find the training is mandatory, it is certainly best handled by seeing that all employees must participate on an annual basis, and that it should be, information should be collected by HR. And this step will also help us with the Audit General's report that we just recently received.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. And your motion would be to adopt...
To make it mandatory that all county employees have a yearly cybersecurity training class, and that the records be kept with HR to ensure that we have that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? May I? May I? May I please, the chairman, the board, administration, and council? I likewise applaud Supervisor Johnson with respect to this initiative. However, court employees are not on the county computer system. We are on the AOC's computer system, number one. Number two, we already have mandatory cyber training. We're required by the AOC. The AOC and the Chief Justice of the Arizona Judicial Council determines what is the mandatory training for all court employees, and we already have mandatory training for court employees. So I was a little concerned when I read the item on the agenda that says all employees were already covered by the AOC, and we are already required to complete security, cybersecurity training. Is that on a yearly basis? Is that on a yearly basis?
Yes.
I would leave that up to the county attorney to fight it out.
In fact, we would be more than.
Want to change your motion?
We would be more than happy to have county employees come to our probation conference when our IT manager, and many times, we have people that come from the AOC, and they present the cybersecurity classes.
I think the motion would be the same, if, if, it'd be up to the, you know, the county to decide that what their training is, is adequate. I have no problem with that. Okay. Well, you did present a motion.
Well, I'll second the motion.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 30, for our newest member of the board, Supervisor Wakamoto. Discussion, possible action for the appointment of members of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to fill the vacant regional and state board's appointments to the Colorado River Regional Sewer Coalition and Legislative Policy Committee. Supervisor Angus, I believe that you are serving on that, is that correct?
(Inaudible) Sewer Coalition?
No. Okay, that was Supervisor Moss? Okay. Well, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, these are both Supervisor Moss's positions, but this year, I believe that, and he, he took the Legislative Policy Committee legislatively as on, from me last year, because I had some personal issues, but that's one I would like this year. So, I don't know if this is written correctly to go to the supervisor from District 5, but I don't want the sewer, thank you.[1306.11][1306.11](Laughter).
Chairman Watson, I would also be interested in serving on the, on the Legislative Policy Committee, so.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Johnson. The Colorado River Sewer Coalition, I don't believe they've ever had a report on that. I don't believe it's even called the Colorado River Regional Sewer Coalition, hasn't been called that in years. Does anybody remember any, getting any reports on it?
I don't.
Has the clerk received any reports, do you recall?
No, I have not.
And I'm pretty sure they kind of disbanded and went into a new direction, but I don't, before we place somebody on a committee that doesn't exist anymore.
Maybe we can just continue this till the next meeting?
Yes, I recommend that we continue this item, till the next meeting.
Or if there is a problem with the wording, you know, maybe just take no action and let it come back next week.
And plus, there's a, the Water Authority, too, we need a little switch, so we can maybe do it all.
Probably three or four actions we need to take, so, Chair would entertain a motion to table this item for two weeks.
Second. Keeping in mind that if you table or continue, we can't change the verbiage, so if you take no action, we can bring back a new item.
Okay.
Now, I have a question, the legislative committee with CSA meeting, the summit coming up, I think that one needs to be filled before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting.
When is the summit? It's, we have a meeting before. It's in October.
It's right after, I believe.
It's after.
Our first meeting is October 2nd.
Right. There's a CSA meeting starting Thursday, this week.
Right. The 21st, I think. So, it'd be nice to let them know who's gonna be on that, that committee, and Supervisor Angus and I both showed interest, so.
Well, if, if, I'll be honest with you, if you, if you want to do it this year, I'm gonna be working on one of those items, but if you want to be the actual liaison to CSA, I'm okay with it.
I have the time to commit to it, so.
Get in form of motion.
I make a motion that Supervisor Bishop is the new CSA Legislative Policy Committee Legislative Liaison.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second it. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. The other items, we'll come back at the next.
Are you taking no action on the other portion?
Correct. No action on the other item. Item number 31, discussion, possible action, approve the expenditure of $29,050 from Fund Number 7002065, Taxpayers Information Fund, TIF, for the purpose of automating the tax lien foreclosure process. We have this item brought to us by Treasurer Cox. Treasurer Cox, would you like to come down and enlighten my board as to your requirements?
Good morning, thank you so much, Chairman Watson, supervisors, board. I did an entire write-up. I don't know if everyone had a chance to take a look at the write-up. I wanted to hit the highlights that I felt were most important, and I have Luke Mornian, I Management Analyst Senior, and Julia Dollarhide available for questions, because they did all of the analysis. I got the top, top view, the 10,000-foot view. I understand how to do it. I understand what we're doing and what our mission is. But for really in-depth information, I'd like them to kind of walk you through what, what our plan is, so.
Let me, is the board aware of the intent to purchase the software? Is it necessary for the presentation?
I don't think so.
I don't see a reason for the presentation. Just curious why this wasn't brought up at budget time?
Oh, it's, it's within her budget, I believe.
We did not budget money in the TIF fund, although we have money, because last year we budgeted $47,000, and we spent less than that. We spent, actually, we earned $2,000 more, so we ended up right side up on that budget. And that's the budget that, that is used for the treasurer to buy new computer systems, any kind of enhancements, those kind of things. We didn't anticipate this being an issue. Part of the reason that that is, is because of the analysis that we had to go through to find out that this issue was technologically challenged, for, for lack of a better way to put it. We had to quantify it, which we did. Luke and Julia did most of the work. We knew that the numbers were out there. We had not been able to, prior to budget, say, all right, we've got a handle on it, we know what to do. And we went to IT and worked with Nathan McDaniels on, on how this could happen, and he sent us to his vendor for a price, and this is how much it cost. So, we really didn't even find out the quote until July of how much it would be for us to do, and we didn't really have the complete and full understanding until after the budget process.
I have no question with what, what they're asking. I think it's probably necessary, just curious about the other part.
Then I just make a motion that we approve the expenditure $29,050 from Fund 7002065 for the purpose of automating the tax lien foreclosure process. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 32.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 33.
I do have a question on this one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Is this something?
Supervisor Johnson.
Is this something that we should advertise? I mean, I don't have any idea where this is at or anything, but it's the name of a mountain, or are there other people that like to name mountains, or?
Actually, it was given to us on short notice that it'd be difficult to advertise it for much, much more than a couple of weeks.
Well, maybe I made a mistake on the reading of it, but is it because those people put into it to the, to the naming people, that's why it was on their agenda, so that we could hold it and maybe do, I mean, it's just a future district, I don't know if.
That's what I understood.
Naming a mountain is, if there's a lot of people that want to name it after.
(Inaudible).
This is in the, in the neighborhood of Valley Vista and Entertains Point. Are you familiar with that on?
Yes.
Route 66?
Yes.
It's one of the mountains that are just, actually, they have a home on top of it.
Ah. That was the only question I had, if people are gonna come later and complain.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.